Okay, are we ready?
Well, I'm.
Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, August 28th, 2024, and I'd like to open the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable, Channel 8. If we all could rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check with Mary Ann, two over to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, thank you. Okay. I'd like to ask that public comment in each hearing will be at the end of the -- well, historically, I think I do them in the middle. If for some reason I am -- we are listening to a presentation and I do not, under that specific hearing, ask for a public comment, please speak up. It's very important that we get everybody's comments into the record, and we want to listen to everybody. So if I make a mistake, feel free to correct me. All right, so tonight, we are one member short, which means that we'll be utilizing some associate members, which is great. And I will state who was on each hearing prior to that hearing. Charlie, would you like to read the first hearing? And by the way, it will be the five members. Why don't we start with Charlie? How's that? So it will be four regular members, four full-time members, and Charlie, why don't you read the first one, and then we'll rotate from there. Charlie.
Wednesday, August 28th, 2024, continued hearings of the Zoning Board of Appeals. First is 71 Hoop Pole Road. Petitioners Strong Tree Engineering LLC requests a special permit under 174.17.1 and 174.33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming structure and replace it with a new single-family structure and accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on property located in an R5 zoning district, MAP 57, parcel 45, Mashpee, Mass. Owners of record, Stephen K. Care and Allison E. Care, continued from August 14th, 2024 hearings.
Sir, if you could state your name and your involvement in the project, please.
Good evening, Board. My name is Stephen Care. I'm representing myself and my wife, Allison. We recently purchased the land in Cottage at 71 Hoop Pole Road. After consultation with the building commissioner, we are applying to the Board of Appeals under 174.17.1 and 174.33 to raise the existing cottage and cesspool, which are pre-existing, non-conforming. We have applied to and received the approval of the Conservation Commission. We will be building a new four-bedroom house, which will comply with all setbacks and height restrictions. Also, a six-bedroom D-Nite septic system will be constructed, complying with all setbacks and Board of Health requirements. In the future, we intend to apply for -- to the building commissioner to build a 900-square-foot accessory apartment that would comply with all zoning requirements. It will be connected to the septic system we will be building soon. I have all new setback distances, heights, lock coverages, frontage, as shown on the plans. If you'd like to review them, please ask. They all comply with the present zoning requirements. Thank you.
Okay, Charlie, could you read any of the letters into the record, please?
My wall. Thank you. Conservation Commission. Resource area buffer zone to inland bank and buffer zone to bordering vegetated wetland, VVW. Notice of intent. Application was approved unanimously due to benefits the project will have to resource areas and buffer zones on site. With NOI approval, a condition to reduce lawn between the pond and the cottage in the buffer zones and plant with native vegetation. The -- let me just grab the -- Board of Health, relative to 71 Hoop Pole Road, received 8/27/24. Six-bedroom property, four bedrooms in main house and two bedrooms in ADU at top of property. Original house to be disconnected from septic. And I believe that's --
Would that be it?
-- all that we have from the town agencies.
Thank you, Charlie. Board questions, please. I know I have a couple, but I'll wait. That's okay.
The existing boathouse building, is that coming down or staying?
The existing boathouse building will be staying. Don't have plans of removing it right now.
Any comments from Conservation on that? Were there?
No.
No, there weren't?
No.
No.
Conservation comments?
Yes, there are.
There are some comments?
No, we read them in.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, yeah, the building is --
Not relative to the building. Are you -- are there -- Does a building that exists today have any pre-existing non-conformities?
Yes.
Are you creating any new non-ex -- non -- new non-conformities?
No.
Are you then, it sounds like to me, you're reducing all those non-conformities and bringing them all into conforming?
Yes, sir.
So every -- so the bottom line is, you've got an AI system, and you're bringing all non-conformities up to conforming?
Yes.
Thank you. Board questions?
Tell me about the paved court to remain. What do you mean?
So there's a tennis court that was put there who knows when, and we're just going to keep it so my children have a place to ride their bikes.
Anybody else on this board have questions? Associate members, anyone?
Big lot.
No.
Yeah.
It's going to be an improvement. I know it's --
All right, so David, do you have any questions or input?
I want to -- I just want to mention that the ADU is at 900 square feet, which is allowed, but I don't think -- the basement and attic should not be conditioned space or used anything but storage.
So if we're someone to make a motion, please make certain that the ADU will not have habitable space in the basement. Does that make sense, David?
No heating?
The attic, they shouldn't be -- they shouldn't --
No heat or air conditioning?
No heat, air conditioning, non-habitable space. The basement and attic will be kept as non-habitable, i.e. no heat, no conditioned space.
Yeah, we don't have plans to have access down to the basement.
Board questions anymore? Okay, let's go out to the audience. Anyone in the audience have any input, questions, issues, and references to application?
Just one other -- I'm out of curiosity. What are you doing with the ADU, that building? The two bedrooms? Is that just a rental or landlord's?
We need a garage space. So instead of putting it right next to the house, we'd move it up there. And I'm not certain, honestly. It's probably not going to happen for some time. I don't have the finances to fill that out.
Somebody behind you thinks it might be sooner than you think.
Any other board questions?
No.
David, you all set?
I'm good.
Audience is all set? Okay. All right, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to have a motion in reference to the application, please.
Okay, motion relative to 71 Hoop Pole Road. Petitioners Strong Tree Engineering LLC requests a special permit under 174.17.1 and 174.33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming structure and replace it with a new single-family structure and accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on property located in an R5 zoning district, MAP 57, parcel 45, Mashpee, Mass. Owners of record, Stephen K. Care and Allison E. Care, with the following conditions. Number one, the Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Laws 48, Section 9. Number two, site plan. Project Site Improvement, 71 Hoop Pole Road, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for Stephen Care, dates 4/24/2024. Revisions 5/23/24. Revised buffer zones for conservation, 6/7/24. Proposed coverage added for ZBA, 8/22/24. Proposed house and septic shifted further north, away from pond, prepared by Strong Tree Engineering. Stamped and signed by Justin J. Lamaro, registered civil engineer, number 47377. Building plans. Prepared for Care, resident, 71 Hoop Pole Road, Mashpee, Mass. Scale 3/16 of an inch equals one foot. Prepared by Huntington Homes, Inc., drawing number EL-1. Front elevation EL-2. Right side elevation EL-3. Left side elevation EL-4 elevation. Date 3/6/2024. Four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five added, and conditioned on the fact on -- the condition that the ADU will not have any habitable space, no heating or cooling or habitable space in any portion of the ADU.
No, no, in the basement and attic.
In the attic.
The ADU will be habitable space, but the basement and attic will not be habitable space.
Let me back up.
It's okay.
The basement and attic of the ADU will not have any habitable space, meaning no heating or cooling or air conditioning.
Well done. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Wait a minute. I'm not done yet.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Number six, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to the Board. Number seven, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Building Department review in reference to the tree bylaw, Chapter 175 of the Town Bylaws, prior to the application of the building permit. Number eight, the Board finds under 174.17.1 and 174.33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking and there are no new non-conformities being created by this project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Enjoy. In anticipation of Kim Path, who sat on Kim Path at the last meeting when Scott was not here because he abstained, right?
When I was at the last meeting.
Good call. Charlie, take your time. I think if we can duplicate, it probably makes sense, right? If we can't, that's another state -- another situation. Charlie? Yep. Were you -- you were not here during Kim Path?
I was not here at the last meeting.
Was it last meeting, Kim Path?
Yes.
So that means it was just the three of us and two associates on Kim Path. Uh-huh. So do any of you gentlemen remember if you voted on Kim Path at the last meeting? Minimumly heard it in extent, so it wouldn't have been -- Mary Ann, do you know?
I did not.
So you did not.
I think I did.
Mike, you might have, first night. So why don't we just, why don't we do this? Why don't we presume it's Mike and Charlie? Is that okay?
True.
At this point, it'll be -- no, I only need one member because there's four, right? But you didn't sit. Did you read the minutes?
I read the minutes.
Okay, so fine, you can sit. So it'll be the four regular members, and why don't we go with Mike? How's that?
Charlie and Mike sat on it.
Perfect. So it'll be Mike, four regular members. She's read the minutes. We're fine. That will be who will sit on Kim Path. Charlie, would you please read Kim Path?
Sure.
Wait a minute, Ron.
Oh, I thought you were done.
Nope.
Don't you have to sign some more stuff?
Okay, I'll read while you're writing.
Be my guest.
Second continued hearing is 54 Kim Path. Owners John J. and Christine S. Mizzi request a special permit under 174.17.1 and 174.33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family structure on property located in an R3 and Puppanasset Overlay District, MAP 117, parcel 96, Mashpee, Mass, continued from August 14th, 2024.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing John and Christine Mizzi, owners of 54 Kim Path. With me tonight is Thomas Bunker, the engineer for the project BSS Engineering. When we presented this project last time on the 14th, we went over the project. It is a raise and replace under 174.17.1 and 174.33, located in the Puppanasset Overlay District. Went through the project with the Board. The Board had two matters that they wanted to have addressed by the engineer, and that was to deal with the stormwater management, drywells, and those calculations. So Tom is here. He's put those on his plans. He's here to answer any questions. The second matter, there was a lot of discussion about a paved driveway. I just want to note that that driveway is not on our lot. It's on the neighboring lot, and we are not proposing a paved driveway. And that's just shown noted and highlighted in pink there to make sure that it's clear on the plan that we are not proposing any pavement or paved driveway. So with that, if less the Board has any other questions for me, I think we went over the project pretty --
Why don't we read any letters into the record? Should we read them in again? Mary Ann?
There was one letter that wasn't ready.
There's a new one.
Yeah, why don't we read the new one then, Charlie, if you would, please?
Okay.
I bought her letter.
Thank you. Okay. A letter dated August 9th, 2024, from Jennifer Manginello, relative to 54 Kim Path, to Mr. Ron Bonvy. "We are writing to express our strong support for the proposed house plans submitted by our neighbors, John and Christine Mizzi, for their property located at 54 Kim Path. Having known John and Christine for over 10 years, we can attest to their commitment to maintaining and enhancing the aesthetic of our neighborhood. Their proposed plans are not only consistent with the character of our community, but also promise to enhance the overall appeal of the area. The design they have proposed is respectful to the surrounding properties and aligns well with the existing architectural style of our neighborhood. We fully support the approval of these plans. Thank you for considering our perspective on this matter. Sincerely, Rich and Jennifer Manginello." 56 Kim Path. And we have dated 8/27/24, Board of Health comments. Board of Health, "Septic submitted to zoning shows upgrade of septic with IA technology. Three bedrooms. Doors cannot be put on loft. Septic plan must be submitted to Health Department permotees for official review when building permit is pulled." Conservation Department comments relative to 54 Kim Path, dated 8/27/24. "Resource areas LSCSF and buffer zone to coastal dune. NOI application was approved unanimously due to improvements to the property through an IA septic upgrade, improved water storage capacity, and mitigation plantings with conditions of a one-year mitigation and monitoring contract with a qualified professional. And all lawns must be composed of a native clover mix." And I believe --
Is that it, Mary Ann?
Those are the only ones that we have.
Okay, so we're at board questions. I know I have a couple, but --
A question for you. On the driveway, it looks like underneath the driveway is going to be a leaching chamber?
That's correct.
Okay, I know this. Ron, you could probably help me with this. Some sort of a special chamber you need?
Probably age 20. I presume you designed it.
Age 20, it's in the -- one of the pages submitted with the calculations. It's a precast.
So that's an acceptable --
Yeah.
Age 20.
It's a reinforced tank so that you can dive on it.
There's actually, I just say, the previous plan. So I revised this slightly after the initial hearing, and the previous plan had what we more typically put in as their round drywells, but they are deeper. They're almost three feet deep. So I substituted this type because it's only a little under two feet deep to provide more separation from the groundwater.
Okay. Got it. And it'll hold, what, two, three cars, this driveway?
Right. Two, probably.
I think there's two in there, and there's like, I think, one. A guest can parallel park in front. That gravel goes across the front, halfway across the front.
Got it.
Of that was also.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bunker, nice to see you. I have some drainage questions. As we all know, Kim Path has its issues, right?
Correct.
And as we all know, this Board's probably number-one criteria is to protect our residents and to protect the members of our town. That being said, when you figured your -- and I've got your drainage calculations here. I spent a little bit of time on them. When you figured your A, total watershed area, did you take into consideration any off-site in that A computation?
Off-site, no.
Is there any off-site drainage water coming towards this lot?
I don't believe so. The back of the lot is, has the raised retaining wall, basically, for the septic system.
Is that retaining -- and I -- why don't you answer? I don't want to step in. Why don't you answer the question? I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, I'm just saying that if there was higher ground to the north, that retaining wall would block it from entering, certainly block it from going through the site, not into Kim Path.
I was hoping you weren't going to say that. That's what concerns me. Is that retaining wall for breakout?
It's lined, but it's -- the retaining wall is to lift the septic system to get the minimum five-foot clearance above groundwater.
Yeah, so it's for breakout of the leach field. So that being said, it's also going to act double-wise, and that's going to be breaking out of a leach field. It's also going to be for any type of flow coming onto the lot. I'm not -- I don't have a lot of contours. I don't have any contours off the lot, right, in the behind the lot. My point is, is here's where I don't want to fall. And I don't spend hours on this, but frankly, I don't want to be in a position where, if this plan is followed and this person builds this house by this plan, and then two people, one person comes to this Board and says, "I am now having issues that I never had in my life." And I look at this plan and I say, "All right, you got a breakout wall in the backyard. It's a mounted leach field system, which is creating major grade change in the back of this house." So a breakout wall says to me it's impervious from one -- it's impervious from both sides.
Right.
Okay, so being an impervious wall, that's telling me that whatever water was coming, if there is any, from the back to the front, isn't coming that way anymore. So the person who lives behind this house, if their water used to flow towards this house, it's not flowing that way anymore. Not after this is built, because of that breakout wall.
Right.
I'm concerned, I'm not against the proposal. I'm concerned that this area already is inundated. I can't, I did not go down there last, what was it, Monday? But if I did, I probably wouldn't be able to drive down there because you probably couldn't get down the street. That being said, when you start changing contours and start adding breakout walls, which are impervious, and you start doing the things that were, that are being done on this lot, I get very nervous. Because -- and I'll tell you what would change that nervousness. If you, as an engineer, and I'm not, you, as an engineer, could state the following for the record, that if this lot is built per this plan, that there's not going to be any adverse conditions created for a butters, whether it be water, whether it be drainage, whether, whatever it might be. If that, if that's, if you're able to say that as a registered engineer, I'm okay with that. But you're going on the hook because I'm not.
Right.
It's that simple.
We do have elevations here, and so if you look at, at least on the existing condition side, the rear of our lot is at elevation 7.2, and the rear lot line, there are elevations that are 6.2, 6.3.
I get it, but we don't know what that will do in a flooding situation. I --
Well, it means that the lot behind is lower.
I get it, but it could be six inches to a foot lower, but it's going to hold two feet of water. Where's that foot of water going? Because you just put a breakout wall there. It doesn't matter. You see, I'm okay with, again, I'm not an engineer and a professor B1. I have enough knowledge of engineering to be dangerous, and the bottom line is, is if you can say, and it's a matter of record, that once this house is built by this plan, and you're going to certify this is built by this plan, right? Because it has been built, then it's not going to create any water problems, et cetera, et cetera, to any of the butters. I'm totally fine with it. But if you can't say that, then I'm concerned. And I got to tell you, I don't know how I could say that. I don't, I couldn't say that. When you start putting breakout walls in and you start creating mound systems and you start now, you know, maybe that lot is six inches to a foot or a foot and a half lower, but now you're, all of a sudden, you're doing this with the backyard? I think somebody in that back, somebody in the budding lot could say, and they'd be correct, "Hey, we just had a rain event, and I never had experienced this issue before, and now I'm experiencing this." And I don't want that person sitting in this audience blaming this Board. They're going to blame somebody. They need to blame a design engineer. You.
I'll blame the neighbor.
One of the things that this Board is concerned about is to make sure that any water stays on the lot.
So he did that.
So if the water, it sounds like all the water on this lot is going to stay on this lot, and all the water behind this lot, which is lower, is going to stay on his lot. So if he's got a problem where his water is now flowing into the street, not into --
Well, this is the backyard, so the street isn't the issue.
Let me help you with this.
You see where I'm, you see where I'm coming from?
And, Mr. Bunker, if I say something wrong, speak up. So you, right now, have got a conditions. This lot's probably, it seems to me, is a little bit higher. Just lay like this, all right? Here's the lot. They're building on his existence. Here's the backyard. What they're going to do is mound the backyard because they're going to add a leach field. They're going to put a wall in the backyard, which is impervious, a breakout wall. Whatever water came from here to there may not go that way anymore.
Yeah, are these pre-existing six and seven feet?
Yes.
So they're pre-existing before he puts a wall?
No, no, he's doing this to the backyard. How high are you raising the backyard? From existing today's grade to where you're going to leave it? How high are you raising it?
And closing the wall is going from seven to 10.
So it's raising the backyard, it's going up three feet?
But it was already at seven.
Yeah.
And it was already higher.
And so you've been taking water when you had a six, maybe you had a two-inch range?
Taking somebody else's water.
Correct.
I, but that's natural flow, Jonathan. Listen.
I think it's important that each lot contain their own water.
Yeah, but natural hydrology is going to, it's going to spread.
Well, right now --
But if it's already, if the lot we're talking about, 54 Kim Path, is already higher than the lot behind it, I don't see where the rub is.
Right.
Depends on what --
I agree, because what I think what Jonathan's getting at is that you're concerned about the water coming off the behind lot that's not our water. It's already coming from somewhere else. It's already coming from somewhere else.
So I'm talking about-
Somebody else's-
I'm talking about natural flows that exist today, that could have existed, because this house might have been built 30 years ago, so we got a natural flow scenario. So we got a natural flow exists out there today, it's been existing for 30 years. What I'm saying is, once this house is built, there's major grade changes that are going to affect, that are going to occur in this lot. When those occur, I don't want to be in a position where somebody's natural flow, used to come this way, no longer goes this way, and their basement's flooded and they can't get into their house. That's all I'm saying. If you, if, if the rest of the board's okay with it, okay.
I'd be okay with it if he could assure me that there wouldn't be an issue.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying to the engineer, give us something, and it'll go on record, that we're not going to create a scenario that we're going to make in a butter, have a problem that does exist today.
I, I know that that area is quite flat, I don't have the exact numbers, I can virtually guarantee that we'll not have a problem, you know, that's, I know you were exaggerating, but I, I will never have a problem where there's two feet of water on that lot, and they can't get to the house. Because I'm sure the next road up, I can't, whichever road that is up there.
Nick Trails.
Nick, Nick Trail is lower than-
Kim Path.
Than the neighbor's lot. So I don't think there's any type of excessive, there, there's no great watershed that's going to flow from, you know, north, northeast to southwest across us.
Sharon, what do you think?
But I can't guarantee that there's nothing that might back up a little bit, but there is, you see, somewhat, almost of a little, a little trench almost between the two lots.
Well, knowing that it's a sand, sand and gravel, it's different than, say, it was clay. And it's, sandy gravel is more, more pervious, and it's going to flow, flow the natural flow. Now, if it was clay, and it was slightly lower, it would probably, it would go up slightly uphill, but it's not clay there.
I raise an issue, the board can, it doesn't matter to me.
I don't want to speak for Tom, I know, I'm sure he doesn't want to guarantee anything, because you can't make any guarantees, but it seems to be like, you know, what he's saying in his professional opinion, he thinks it's unlikely that it's going to create any problems for any neighbors.
When I saw the breakout wall, that's what my concern right there started, because when you have a breakout wall, that is retaining a filled area of now three feet, it's totally impervious. That gets me nervous.
Right, but again-
Totally different, the backyard of this lot's going to be totally different looking, and it's going to be totally impervious barrier sitting there.
But again, it, as Jonathan pointed out, any of the water that we're concerned about is coming off-site.
Coming from somebody else's property.
Possibly onto your site today, but will not come onto your site tomorrow. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
And somebody could argue, could argue, "Hey, it's been coming off my site, onto your site for 45 years, and you just changed that drainage pattern, and now it's in my basement." I just don't want to be the guy that's, that's sitting there going, "I'm sorry."
I can just say that it's extremely highly unlikely. You can also say that the only way to get us, any type of conforming septic system on there is to create such a wall.
Totally. I, I could see, it had to be there, I get it, I totally understand.
And in, in the future, that back neighbor would probably do the same thing, and create their own wall of similar height.
And, and the other thing I think we point out, if, the, the neighbor letters are all in close proximity to this house, and-
I get that, but those letters could change very quick as soon as they have a major water issue. Okay, they love everybody, they're the best people in the world, but then as soon as they have water in their basement, why'd we do that? We should have never approved this application. That's all I'm saying. I've made my statement.
I guess they should have never said, "We really love it."
There you go.
Yeah.
Who is the neighbor that could be affected? It's not the one that wrote the letter, is it?
It would be, well, anybody could affect it, but it would seem to me, because of the wall, would be really Lot 9, but I don't know, it could be, it could be Lot 11, it could be Lot 8, could be any one of the lots. The way this, the way it's being built up, it could be any one of the lots.
Soon as you change the grade, the drainage changes.
That may be true, but I feel like we're making a lot of assumptions on things that we, you know.
Well, I, I think it's important to make probable assumptions that could possibly happen, especially when you have a lot that probably lasts Monday, okay? You couldn't walk in the backyard possibly, because of the, because of the intensity of that storm, and that's not normal, I get it. But it was a lot of rain, so my point is, is Kim Path has got its problems, and I wouldn't even be raising these issues if it wasn't Kim Path, and other areas that have problems like Kim Path. But anyway.
Is it, is what we're talking about something that is calculable from an engineering sense? Because, because the words that you just used a few minutes ago, you said it's, it's highly unlikely that the scenario that we're talking about will happen and create a problem to the lot behind this lot. And from an engineering sense, we're not engineers, but if an engineer tells us that it's highly unlikely that something will happen, are we entitled to rely upon that?
He just, he just said that.
Yeah.
If you, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bunker, if you, I'm not saying to do this, but if you had done a topo, two lots in both directions, back, front, side, you could have then calculated A.
Yes.
That's my point, yes.
Yeah.
And I, a lot more work could get you to, no, more work, a lot more, whatever it is, more work could get you to a scenario where he could then plug it in and figure out what the rise in that storm event would be, if any, in all these abutting lots, and whether water shedding to a lot of, and, and what it is, is total watershed area in acres, which is A.
So it would be appropriate for us to have that information, it would be appropriate for that to appear on the plan, if it can be done.
I think you're asking, you've never asked for us to do topographics of abutters to abutters, I mean, I think that's a little-
I think this is way overblown, I really do.
I don't think so, but you know what?
It's, it's seven feet, six feet behind it, we're-
And it's all sand.
What's, what's important here is that the water stays on their own property.
Right, and he's giving us-
How is a six-foot water going to go up over seven feet, which now becomes 10? From six to seven, it's not going there now anyway.
Let me ask you a question.
It's running the other way.
Let me ask that, Jonathan. So your next-door neighbor does, builds a new house, you never had water in your land.
You're doing what-ifs. I'm talking about-
I think our life is full of, that's what this board is, is what if.
But I, I will also say, I think we're all getting a little-
Talking six and seven feet.
No, we're, we're talking the possibility in Kim Path of somebody being very upset.
We can agree to disagree.
Yeah, no, I agree, I couldn't agree more.
What's the zoning, what's the zoning concern?
That's the makeup of the board that it should be.
Is it?
Yeah, and the fact that we can agree and disagree.
No, that does, what's the zoning, what's the zoning, where in the zoning bylaw am I concerned about?
I can read the special permit issuing authority, and what it needs to be, and it's flouting.
Well, I don't think that-
Okay, that's one of our number one, you want me to take it out of my briefcase and read every single one? It goes down to radioactive material.
Doesn't apply. It doesn't apply.
Does not.
Why doesn't it apply?
Because 174-17.1 has its own special permit criteria.
I disagree with that.
Well, the case law suggests otherwise.
Well, you need to take that one to court, because I'm, I'm relying on special permit guidelines of this town.
Really blowing this up.
Right now, I, I would rely upon what you told us a few minutes ago, that from an engineering point, it's highly unlikely that the occurrence that we're talking about would occur.
That's good enough for me.
To me, we're relying upon you.
Yeah.
But what if he's wrong? What if he's wrong? I mean, he's got a legitimate point. I, I know that, but he has to make a legitimate point about changing-
He's saying he hasn't done the research, he's not sure what's going to happen.
He said it's highly unlikely, that's good enough for me.
Well, okay. Why don't we do this? Why don't we move the question, and we'll take it from there, and if it gets approved, we're, the sitting people right now are, what is it?
Obviously, it's not going to be approved, so.
Well, I'm not so sure, I mean, why? I mean, who's sitting at this again? It's, um, one, two, three, four, Mike, and Mike, so there's, there's, I'm not so sure. Why don't we do this? Why don't we close, is there any, why don't we go through the checklist first? I want to make sure we get this thing right, okay? Let's go out to, we've done letters about it, Mr. Morris, do you have any input?
Yeah, I was thinking, I, I don't think building height is a, um, a concern, but do you, did you establish an average original grade? Because you're raising it, and I, and I wouldn't want to lose that.
We did, I know we gave that elevation to the architect.
It should be on the architectural plans.
Oh, here, average grade, note 12, we have that listed, so we can certify-
So we can certify later that it's not above, if, if that becomes close, okay.
Right.
Thirty feet in pumping acid over there.
Correct. From the original grade, so they're raising the grade, so that would change, that, that's not how it's done. But I just wanted to make sure that he had that, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, if I may, just, one other, one other thing. Your special permit criteria, one of the criterias is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And this project is improving the one, one of the non-conformities, it is going to be flood zone compliant, it's going to be building code compliant, it is getting an IA system, and it has been approved by the Conservation Commission. It has had four, four or five abutter letters, all in support. So when you have to take the totality of what we've presented to say it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and all that this board has suggested is that potentially, in the future, the neighbor could have a water problem.
It is my opinion that it's better than 50/50, their neighbors are going to have more of a water problem than they have tomorrow after this house is built.
Well, you've had the engineer here to say it's highly unlikely, and you've asked him to be here-
So is the engineer stating that it's highly unlikely, just for the record, that there's going to be any increased issues in reference to water problems, or water issues on the abutting lots, after this house is built?
I believe that's highly unlikely, that this, this wall here will create that.
No, no, I'm saying it's designed, this plan is designed.
Well, I mean, you're saying that it's the wall that's going to do it.
I'm worried about the breakout wall, I'm also worried about the grade in front of the breakout wall, which is creating the water that's going to go up to the breakout wall, so it's the whole thing in totality.
Right, but you're saying the wall is going to cause it, and I'm just saying-
Well, it's that and a combination of other things. I'm just saying that I would be concerned if I lived behind or on the side of this house, I would be very concerned. But that's, if you're the engineer and you're saying it's highly unlikely, that's up to you. All right, so let's keep going.
Are they in the flood zone as well?
Say again?
Are they in the flood zone?
Yes.
I don't have the thing on.
The whole area is a flood zone.
The whole, the whole-
All pumping acid.
Yeah, basically.
So that being said, do we have any, um, letters that need to be read to the record? Do we already do that?
I think we've already done that.
Okay, good. I didn't check that off.
Yep.
All right, so audience participation, anybody in the audience like to state anything about this application? Okay.
And Conservation approved this project as well, and they are always concerned about stormwater issues as well.
Understood. Board questions again?
Just one last question. Are you very comfortable about this, what you presented, as far as? I'm, I don't believe that you, you can guarantee it. I mean, I don't know.
My question is, if there is a way to guarantee it and get information, then, and it's, he raises an interesting, on a event, and if they could get that information, and provide that information, I don't know how expensive it is, or time-consuming it is, but I'd feel much better if we had the answer to that, and if there's a way to get to that answer, shouldn't we have it?
I suppose, if I chime in, if it, if it's in the flood zone, nobody should have a basement anyway, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Problem is, you got the people that are in the flood zone that already have basements that have been there for, you know, 50 years or something, right? And all of a sudden, you do a mounted leach field-
I think eventually that's going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
You know, diverting one out of the people's properties is a simple matter anyways, so.
I don't want to be potty to the whole thing, that's the bottom line. We have enough remands, I don't need to be in the power of another remand, that's what I'm playing at.
I'm curious if you deny this project, whether you're going to get a remand.
I understand, I can defend that one, because I'll have, I'll do that, I'll do that A, I'll do the whole A, and I can tell you right now, I know what I'm going to come up with. I feel very confident what I'm going to come up with. So I, I can defend the remand, I really could.
Well, get ready, because there will be.
No problem, I can, I can do that, because I'll go out and do the work.
I mean-
All right, so, at this point in time, I see we're down to, let's close a public hearing?
Well, I need four votes for this thing to pass, and if I don't have four votes, I'd rather just get the informa, try, see if, if Tom's going to get the information, unless, unless there's, you know, I can't believe that I have to put this off, but I think, you know, we've given you the information. You asked Tom to make a statement-
Yeah.
That it's highly unlikely that this is, he's put that on the record.
No, I asked Tom to make the following statement. Will you make the following statement? That there's going to be no one that's going to be negatively impacted if this house is built by this plan, water-wise or not? And if you're willing to make that statement, I, I'm, I'm there, because you're, you know what, you're a certified engineer, I'm not. But if you're not willing to make that statement, you're saying there's a strong probability it won't, I'm concerned about that. I want you to say that with all my years of schooling, as an engineer, it's not going to create a problem for an abutter, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
But for how long?
Well, that's, I mean, he goes on record in that, I mean, someone else shakes some change, he's not going to be liable for that, but I can tell you-
And we're not asking if it's a monsoon, that, that could happen, and especially around this area.
Listen, I'm going to tell you, if there, if there's a hundred-year storm, there is no Kim Path, because we're not going to Kim Path for, for a walk, we all know that.
John, speak up, you're disturbed, you think it's no big deal?
I would just absolutely tell him what he wants to hear.
I agree.
I think, I think it's imperative that everybody keeps their water on their lot.
And we're doing that.
And that's what's happening here. This is, we've voted on this for 20 years, and this has never come up. What about somebody else's now, the-
Yeah, no, it came up already, it came up, D W brought it up on a lot that the water was coming down the street onto the town property. That came up like, two months ago. We've been, we've been dealing with this for a while.
Yeah, but that was different from what we're talking here. Apples and oranges, totally different.
Dave, are you comfortable with this? You comfortable with this?
I'm fine with it.
I mean, again, you have your building commissioner who's fine with it, you have your Conservation Commission that's fine with it.
I was getting ready to close, you stopped me, it's up to you, I mean, you, I'm, I'm, you see which way I'm going, I don't know, it's up to, up to Mike, but I-
Mike, what do you think?
Well, I think anytime there's a substantial change in grade, it gives me concern, and if there was a way to ascertain with more probability than just, I'm an educated, very educated guest, if you could find a way to measure the probability, or measure the impact of this change in grade, why wouldn't that be standard operating procedure for this board?
It's not really a zoning question.
Yeah, it is, it's a-
I don't know how much more certainty we would have in the future, if the measurements were made, if the calculations were done, because even with the engineering information put into a plan, that doesn't mean that something won't happen.
Well, let me just say this, I'm telling you, I got to say this, this is important.
Yeah.
Now, listen, I've had to do this before. Mr. Bunker could do the research, he could do the abutting lots, he could put it in his computer, and he could tell us within quarter of an inch to a half an inch, at a given rain event, what this lot's going to do to other lots, and what other lots are going to do to this lot.
Okay.
There's no question.
All right, I did-
Am I correct in that?
Are we going to require this now on every single-
Maybe in every lot in Kim Path, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, why is Kim Path different from any other lot in Puffiness, because they're all in the flood zone?
And we didn't require this on 39 Kim Path, which was approved by this board last year.
And I thought this was about the flooding issue in Kim Path, and, and what you're talking about has nothing to do with the flooding issue in Kim Path.
Yes, it does, because why, let me ask a question, why are you mounting the system? Is the groundwater a little bit high there?
The groundwater, it's, groundwater is consistent in the whole area.
Is the groundwater high in that lot, considered high?
It's, the groundwater is not far below the surface.
So it's, I feel, the groundwater is high, let me answer my own question, that's why you're mounting the system, okay? So you don't have much room to put drainage in, because if you put drainage in, it's in the groundwater. Bottom line is, the saturation out there is immense, and you know what? The, I just don't want to see other residents that abut this property dealing with this issue.
But if, if my clients withdraw this project, you've solved the stormwater problem, but you haven't solved the, the IA system, septic system, water quality problem, you haven't solved the flood zone compliance problems, you haven't solved the building code compliance problems.
When have you ever seen me, as a person on this board, not find a way somehow, some way to get something done? All of them, no, no, well, if they choose to withdraw and just say bye-bye forevermore, that's up to them. But I'm saying there's some research that could be done, and you may have to redesign the backyard or something, I don't know.
Can I ask how difficult that research would be, or how problematic that would be?
I'm sure it's very costly, isn't it?
Well, I think we'd have to get permission, we'd have to get permission from that lot owner to survey, and it'd survey the elevations on that property, from the back of this wall up to Nick Trail, to see what the-
But those are the same people, I believe, that sent letters saying they're in favor of this. I've got to believe you could go in there with your GPS and do a topo on there pretty quickly.
Oh, I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying that it would, it would take, take a little bit of time to do it.
How, how many abutters were, were okay with this?
So I've given you-
So there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I think, six direct abutters in this lot, just direct.
Isn't that enough to, that if there is a problem in the future, that these people were all in favor of it? Right, so-
I don't think they looked at the, I don't think they looked at the wall that would be built and the change in elevation.
If you said, if you said in my-
But there's your coverage.
Just get, no, just for me guessing, if I went to any one of those five people and say, "Did you know you were having a breakout wall in, in the backyard of this, and the grades going up three, four," they'd say, "No, I have no idea of that." They're just looking at a, a plan, they're saying it's okay if they build this house, they have no idea about drainage strategies, and they have no idea, in my opinion, they, maybe they are engineers, maybe they are, I don't know, but I've got to believe they're probably not. And so that means it's our job to protect them, is it not?
Yes, it is.
That's all I'm trying to do.
I'm just saying-
And I'm saying there's a way around this, that ultimately, I believe that this lot will be built substantially like this, maybe, I don't know, but at least we can do that and still protect the people that need to be protected, so. And I'm not saying that I'm against this application, that it should never have a house built, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that some research needs to be done, so that Mr. Bunker can say, "Did the research, this is what's going to happen, best engineering practices, this is what's going to happen, and you know what, it's acceptable, and I'm, and everybody's okay with it." We haven't done that.
Well, it wasn't asked, I mean-
Basically, what you're saying is, if it's currently flowing onto 45 Kim Path, that's fine. Because if you put up a wall and stop that from flowing on, you're creating a problem for your neighbors, and that's not right. That's what you're saying.
I am saying, yeah.
Yeah, you want to allow the neighbors' water to flow onto 54 Kim Path, and I, I don't agree with that.
But there's no natural flow, it's a, it's a developed, all these houses, lots are developed.
So go to Conservation, ask them, "When is a wetland's a wetland?" The day that that, the, the day that that vegetation- The day that that, the day that that vegetation grows, it's a wetlands, correct?"
Correct.
That's my point. Natural flow is today. If it's, if it's been like that for like, for six months, it's natural flow. That's my point, is things could change, things are gonna substantially change out there by this design. There's no question.
Ron, you're contradicting yourself. You're allowing people, neighbors, to have their water flow onto his property.
Which hasn't negatively impacted him.
At this point, that natural flow, you can't change the natural flow of water.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, oh, I know you can, but if it's, but if you change it to drainage...
Guys, I've lived, let's say, in my house for forty-five years, I've accepted certain water events because it's the way it is. Now, all of a sudden, someone next to me does something, and it's totally different. Now, my basement gets three feet of water in it, and now, and I'm exaggerating, and I've got all these issues. They're gonna come, where are they gonna come? To the town.
That's a real exaggeration.
It is not an exaggeration from what I can see in this plan, I can tell you.
Ron, how long of a guarantee do you want from them? How long?
It's not, it's not about...
Forever?
No, it's just him saying he's done the work, and you know what? There's not gonna be any major changes to people's existing...
Ron, we gotta move this along. He said to you, "I'll guarantee it for five years."
No, 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 it's not time, you don't guarantee, as an engineer, I'm not asking for time. He's just saying, as of today's date, when this house is built, it's not gonna negatively impact the abutters.
Ron, we gotta move this along.
Oh, I agree. So, what do you, what would you like to do? I was getting ready to close the public hearing, and you stopped.
Because I wanna protect my clients.
I, I totally understand what you're doing, I'm just saying to you, I'm getting a member that wants to move it.
No, I understand that. Or you can continue, and then you can do those calculations.
I'd have to take another look to guarantee something.
Then I'd ask for a continuance to the September twelfth, and we'll do the calculations, or September tenth?
Eleventh.
And we'll provide you with additional information.
Okay, so the applicant is asking for an extension till September eleventh? Someone like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request for an extension?
Yeah, relative to fifty-four Kim Path, a motion to continue the hearing from tonight until September eleventh, for action on the part of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so... So, the next one, which is going to be fifty-three Greenwood, do you have to get an ex...
He has to get, she has to do that.
Do you have to? Does she have him come in later? Chris, can you come in tomorrow or something and sign that extension, please? Alright, so on the next one, it'll be four regular members, and so, Mike, you sat on that one, Charlie sat on one, so it'll be Bob, how about that?
Yep.
You're on this one? So, fifty-three Greenwood Road, Charlie, would you like to read fifty-three into the record, please?
Sure. New hearings for August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Fifty-three Greenwood Road, owners Brian and Elizabeth L. Rutana, trustees request a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in R three and Papaneset Overlay District map, one-one-seven parcel three-four-three, Mashpee Mass.
I gotta sign the extension.
Yeah.
Anyway, good evening again, members of the board. For the record, attorney Christopher Corain, I'm representing Brian and Bethany Rutana, they're owners of fifty-three Greenwood Road. This is a raise and replace under one seventy-four dash seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three. This lot is located in the Papaneset Overlay District, which has a minimum lot size requirement of six, six thousand square feet, sixty feet of frontage, twenty-five foot minimum front yard setback, fifteen foot side and rear setbacks, twenty-five percent maximum lot coverage, and a fifty-foot setback to wetland. We do have several non-conformities on this lot. For zoning purposes, the lot is only at eight hundred and twenty-one square feet due to the presence of flood zone land subject to coastal storm flowage. We also do not meet the fifty-foot setback to wetland. We have a hundred percent lot coverage, because again, the lot, ninety-nine percent of this lot is in the flood zone. The front yard setback to Shore Drive is non-conforming at twenty-four point four feet. The rear yard setback to Shore Drive is non-conforming at three point five feet. The rear yard setback to Greenwood Road is non-conforming at one point seven feet. So, what we're proposing is a knockdown and rebuild. This project, and I would note, as a percentage of total lot area, the current lot coverage is thirty-two point three percent. So, that is, that would be a non-conforming condition, even under your old method. So, this is a knockdown and rebuild that is considerably improving this property. So, as a percentage of total lot area, the lot coverage is reduced from thirty-two point three percent to twenty-two point eight percent. The overall structure is decreasing from twenty-two thousand one hundred and three square feet to fourteen hundred eighty-two square feet. So, we're actually reducing coverage by over, almost seven hundred square feet. The front yard setback will become conforming at twenty-five point five feet, so that, the front yard non-conform is eliminated. Both rear yard setbacks are also being eliminated, so both rear yard setbacks to both Shore Drive and Greenwood will be fifteen point five feet, which is both conforming conditions under the bylaw. The house will be flood zone compliant, the house will be building zone compliant, and IA system is proposed, drywells, this has been approved by Conservation. We're not creating any new non-conformities, there's no increase in the bedroom count, and it is consistent with redevelopment in the neighborhood. So, I just, you know, impress upon this board that we are eliminating every, other than the setback to wetland and the lot coverage as we know it now, we're eliminating every non-conformity on this lot, and we're significantly reducing the overall coverage of this lot. So, with that, I would suggest to this board that we don't have, we're not creating any conditions that would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Charlie, would you like to read letters into the record, please?
Yeah, there were two, the board of health and Conservation. Board of health, relative to fifty-three Greenwood Road, two-bedroom house with IA septic and zone two, future increase in bedrooms will not be allowed without nitrogen credit land. Conservation, fifty-three Greenwood Road, resource area LSC SF. NOI application was approved unanimously due to improvements to the property through an IA septic system upgrade, flood compliant foundation, drywall installation, and previous driveway install with conditions to connect drainpipe into abutters property into drywells. All lawn on property is comprised of a microclover variety and adhere to Regulation thirty-one, nitrogen loading slash lawn standards.
That's the extent of the, okay. Board questions?
I'm good.
Just a question on the drainpipe that, that connects into the abutters property into drywells?
So, what my understanding is, is that existing is it connects to the neighbor, and they're eliminating that by redirecting it into drywells on-site.
Okay.
Good luck, Mike.
Very nice. Alright, board questions?
I have none.
Do you have any elevation issues, Ron?
No, I'm, I am, I am still not happy about overflow pipes on, on drainage, but someday when he comes in here, I'm gonna ask him that question again.
I'm not pointing anywhere.
You are?
He's hiding in the background.
Yeah. Well, maybe I, maybe it's time I just ask, so I have a question, young man. Very quick.
I almost put a wig in some glasses.
Yeah, 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 that's good. So, let's just, let's just take the following scenario. Let's say that I put a plug in your overflow. When's that system gonna back up? At what event?
The, we, we've been designing our roof drain systems for the twenty-five-year event, so...
So, the overflow works at, at a twenty-five-plus storm event? Twenty-five in one day, or some, I don't know, whatever that is?
Yep.
And something in excess of twenty-five years? That's the only time that overflow should function?
Should be, yes.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I would be more concerned if it was in a more critical spot.
Sure.
And I just want that to have record.
I'm in.
I'm less concerned here.
Again, Mark Dibb for the record, too.
Yes, thank you. Alright, any other board questions?
Nope.
Okay, so... Abutters. Anybody in the audience have anything to say about this application? David? And I'm not looking at house plans per se, so if you could take a look at those, Dave, please. Back to board questions?
Anybody have any? Want me to slow it down a little bit, John, so you can look at that?
No, I'm just looking at the two-foot-high landscape retaining wall. I didn't know if you were gonna comment on that.
I could care less about landscape, well, in this instance, I only care about breakout wall.
This one's actually already existing, so we're actually removing walls.
I'm, I'm far less concerned about a landscape wall than I am with a breakout wall. No one else on the board? Okay. No one in the audience? I ran through the audience, alright, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So, can I get a motion in reference to the application, please?
Okay, this is relative to fifty-three Greenwood Road. Owners, Brian and Elizabeth L. Rutana, trustees request a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in the R three and Papaneset Overlay District, map one-one-seven parcel three-four-three, Mashpee Mass, with the following conditions. Motion, number one. Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Laws forty A, section nine. Number two, site plan prepared for Brian and Elizabeth Rutana, fifty-three Greenwood Road, Mashpee Mass, sheet one of one, date May ninth, two thousand twenty-four, scale one inch equals twenty feet, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Mark Dibb, number four-five-nine-three-seven, and Matthew Coster, number five-two-two-eight-two. Building plans, number three, prepared for Rutana residents, fifty-three Greenwood Road, Mashpee Mass, scale one-quarter inch equals one foot, date seven sixteen, two thousand twenty-four, A one, first floor plan, A two, second floor plan, garage slash basement plan, A three, left rear, front, and right elevations, A four and five, framing plans stamped and signed by Eric J. Cedarholm, registered structural engineer, number three-eight-nine-six-two, date seven sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the board of health and conservation department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to the board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the pre-bylaw chapter one seventy-five of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, board finds under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood, and that there is sufficient parking, and there were no new non-conformities being created.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you. Here you go, Charlie. Keep going off again. I just looked to see if it was mine. My name's on the back of mine.
So, the next new hearing will be four regular members, and let's see, Mike, you've done one, you, all three of you have done one, right? So, why don't we start up with Charlie again?
Okay.
So, that would be forty-five Papaneset Island, and Charlie, if you'd read it into the record, please?
Alright, forty-five Papaneset Island Road. Owners Lisa Jacobs Conti and Christopher Conti request a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen, one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a two-hundred-and-fifty-two square foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R three zoning district, map one-oh-six, parcel fourteen, Mashpee Mass.
Good evening again. For the record, attorney Christopher Corain, representing Lisa and Christopher Conti, they're the owners of forty-five Papaneset Island Road. They are seeking a written finding from this board under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three to add a approximately two-hundred-and-forty-seven square foot addition, which I've highlighted on the plan here, to the existing single-family dwelling. This property is located in the R three zoning district, which has a minimum lot area of forty thousand square feet, minimum requirement of a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, fifteen foot side yard, side and rear yard setbacks, twenty percent lot coverage max, and a fifty-foot setback to wetland. We have four non-conformities to this lot. Because the lot is entirely within the flood zone, for zoning purposes, we have zero square feet of lot area, although it is a sixteen thousand square foot lot. The front yard setback to Chartway is only thirty point five feet, where forty is required. The setback to Papaneset Island Road is twenty-one point two, where forty is required, and our rear yard setback to Papaneset Island Road is only six point two, which is a non-conforming condition. So, those are our non-conformities. So, again, our proposal is to add this addition on this side of the house. It will not affect any of the existing non-conformities. It will be approximately thirty feet from Papaneset Island Road, which is further away than anything that's any closer than Papaneset Island Road. As a percentage of over, of a total lot area, the existing coverage is nineteen and a half percent, we're going up by a tenth of a percentage to nineteen point six percent. So, again, it's an approximate two-hundred-and-forty-seven square foot increase. Conservation has approved this project, and it is consistent with other development in the neighborhood. So, again, I would suggest to this board that we're not creating any conditions that would create a, a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So, happy to answer any questions if the board has them.
Can we read letters into the record, please, Charlie? Take your time.
Okay, we have board of health and dated eight twenty-seven twenty-four for forty-five Papaneset Island Road, to remain three-bedroom, house already equipped with IA septic. Conservation department comments received eight twenty-seven twenty-four for forty-five Papaneset Island Road. Resource areas, buffer zone to Salt Marsh and LSC SF. NOI application was approved unanimously due to improvements to the buffer zone to Salt Marsh and improvements to stormwater management on-site through installation of a drywall to control proposed patio runoff. Condition of three-year mitigation and monitoring contract with a qualified professional for all mitigation plantings.
And I believe that's all we have. Okay, board questions?
I'm looking at your highlighted area.
Yes.
That's the proposed addition?
Correct.
And I'm looking at this plan here, and it says proposed deck, and it points out two of them. So, I'm a little...
I agree.
I don't understand. I don't understand.
I think that's a grade line or something. Proposed patio underneath the...
No, the deck, they're adding deck to where there's existing deck there.
Why does it say "proposed patio"?
Well, there's a proposed... yeah, and also a proposed deck.
Right, but what they're doing is they're actually reducing the size of the deck, and they're just rebuilding it.
Yeah, but you didn't highlight it, so that's why I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because the main, as I said, the main issue is the addition. The proposed patio is not... it's flat to the ground, it's not zoning. But again, the deck's being reduced in size, but they are redoing the deck.
So they're redoing the... There's a red line.
Correct.
All right, is that... Oh, proposed... yeah, on the back of the house, it says "proposed deck" also.
Correct, right.
There's a proposed patio and a proposed deck.
So the front left says "proposed deck," and then the back of the house says "proposed deck."
No, this, right here.
Yes.
This is just a proposed patio, it's not a deck.
Yeah, and so that's proposed deck, and then the orange is proposed deck, or yellow, the highlighted yellow.
No, this is the addition.
Exactly. So what are you asking for right now? Are you asking for both?
We're asking for them... they're redoing this deck, it's not expanding. So it's actually shrinking in size.
Perfect.
So that is in this addition. Those are the things we're asking for.
So you're asking for a reduction? So you really don't have to ask for anything on the proposed deck on the back?
Correct.
You're only asking for something which is on the left-hand side facing the house in the front, on the side?
Correct.
So the current deck...
Is getting smaller.
...back is where the red line is? Is that correct?
I don't have... let me see.
At least on my plan, there's like a red line.
You have both an existing conditions plan and a proposed conditions plan?
I see a red line below proposed deck.
Right.
But if you look at the setbacks, John, they're the same on the pre-existing...
Are you reducing from the red line down to the...
That's my question.
Looks like the red line in the rear of the house that is shown on John's plan, not on all our plans, is being reduced down to the proposed deck line.
Correct. That is correct. So the red line is shown as what's existing.
Yeah.
And then we're just... we're reducing that.
It gets reduced down to that right there.
It's confusing because of the way he has the arrows. So it looks like where it says "proposed deck" is deck.
Right.
But that's not the case. So the black line shows the reduction in the deck size.
So you're reducing almost in half, it looks like.
Correct. As I said, yeah, it's confusing the way he has it, but the red line shows the existing deck, and then the proposed deck is what's highlighted in the black line.
And from the bottom line, though, you're not asking anything from this board in reference to the reduction of a deck.
No.
You're asking from this board, left-hand side, proposed deck.
No, there's no left side. Yes, correct. I mean...
I mean, you don't need anything from this board to reduce the size of a deck.
Well, it is technically an alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, so...
Well, I'll leave that up to the zoning enforcement officer then.
Yeah, but he improves that condition.
Right, it's not... yeah, it's a reduction, it's not really an addition.
I get it.
Yeah, it reduces lot coverage.
Correct.
Yeah. It's all plus-plus.
Right, and offset, so that... I mean, I would like to keep it in there just because it is technically...
No, 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 if that's in the application, then we have to hear it.
Again, it is reducing it.
All right, so any other board questions? Do we all understand what's going on?
Yes.
All right, Butters, anyone in the audience have anything to say? Okay. Mr. Morris, do you have any input in this application?
No issues, I don't see any new non-conformities.
Okay. Back to board questions?
I'm good.
Motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
I have a second.
Second.
All's in favor? Motion to issue in reference to the application.
Motion dealing with 45... excuse me, Papaneset Island Road. Owners Lisa Jacobs Conti and Christopher Conti request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 252 square-foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 106, parcel 14, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Motion, number one. Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A, section 6. Two, site plan. Prepared for Lisa and Christopher Conti, Mashpee, Mass., planned date July 8, 2024, planned scale 1 inch equals 10 feet, prepared by Thelmoth Engineering, stamped and signed by Michael J. Borselli, civil number 35054, and Gary S. Labrie, number 40039, dated 7/10/24. Additions and renovations plans. Conti Residence, 45 Papaneset Island Road, Mashpee, Mass., date July 16, 2024. A1, first-floor plan. A2, second-floor plan. A3, exterior elevations, prepared by K. Marshall Works Design. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the pre-bi law, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, the board finds under 174-17 and 174-33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a great night, everybody.
Take care, Chris.
Are you leaving us?
I'm leaving now, I'll drop it some later.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Great, just give us one moment to catch up. Okay, so sitting on this will be four regular members, and I guess... what was that? Why don't we have... why don't we change it up a little? Mike, you want to read 16 Taffrail Way? Taffrail Way? Sorry, I apologize.
Taffrail.
Taffrail. 16 Taffrail Way, owner John T. Seminole. Trustee requests a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 516 square-foot addition slash replacement with a new stairway to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 106, parcel 4-0, Mashpee, Massachusetts, with the following conditions. Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Law 40A, section 6. Just that, okay, fine. Good. Okay, one second. All right. So if you could state your involvement in the project and your name, that would be great.
I am Jean Bowden, and I'm here for LeBlanc Builders, who's going to be doing the project for the owner, who is sitting right next to me. This is John Simone.
So I'm John Seminole, I'm the owner of the property.
Great. Okay, so one of you would like to present?
To start, you're here because the building inspector, in the course of us getting a permit, has referred us for a finding because we are non-conforming pre-existing. The house was built in 1993, and it was... the lot was created in 1963. So at this point, we are not... the house is non-conforming pre-existing to the R3 zoning district. You know, we've got a smaller lot. Our lot coverage is supposed to be 20%, so we are already over the lot coverage, non-conforming. But actually, with this little addition they're doing around the back, it's going to decrease the lot coverage and make it closer to the conforming. The... we are also pre-existing non-conforming to the wetland and coastal bank, but we're not changing it, that's going to stay the same. We are 23 feet to the wetland and 19 feet to the coastal bank. And that's one of the areas that he has referred us for. The side and rear, we're actually going to be more conforming to the front setback because we are decreasing that a bit. So we have submitted this... I have a little allergy. The plan that you have, the site plan, there was a little...
It's okay.
You know, we're...
So just overall, what's happening here is kind of a refresh a bit. I currently have a loft inside with a spiral staircase, and I'm going to convert that to like a full second floor and a code staircase. But in doing so, I'm eliminating one of the first-floor bedrooms, so I'm currently a three-bedroom. And I will continue as a three-bedroom because I'll use the bedroom space to have the stairway access upstairs. So that's... I view that as an improvement. My footprint is staying the same. You might see there's two places here where I've kind of extended out into my current deck. On the front side, there's a little extension there to enhance the mechanical room, and then on the back side, I extend part of the deck. As Jean puts, my non-conforming essentially stays the same. The non-conforming from the front setback is also cited as going down slightly from 21.2 to 22.6.
And your lot coverage has gone down?
Yes. So overall, it's... yeah, from my standpoint, it's improvements that are needed after nothing's been done since I bought it like 19 years ago and before that, so... It's a refresh predominantly.
I'm confused at how it's changing.
So it's currently... the front setback is 21.2, is that correct?
That's what it says there, yes.
And that section's going to stay, or that's leaving?
It says the proposed is 22.6. I am removing some of the... it currently has a full... it has a 3/4 wraparound deck. There's one side, the left side here, as we look at it, does not. And I'm removing some of the front deck and some of the side deck.
So it goes from 21-something to 22?
So slight improvement in non-conforming.
21.2 to 22.6, is that correct?
Correct.
But it just doesn't show the removal of the deck there.
If you see where it says in the front there, it says "existing deck" on the left, kind of shaded a bit, at least mine's shaded kind of orange. You keep going right...
Oh, I see a dotted line coming off it.
Exactly.
Got it.
Charlie, could you read into the record, please, any... Yep, we'll go to comments again.
Comments, Board of Health comments for 16 Taffrail Way. To remain three-bedroom, house already equipped with IA septic. Conservation Department comments relative to 16 Taffrail Way. Resource area, buffer to BVW, buffer to Coastal Bank, and LSCSF. Administrative approval was issued due to the two proposed additions to existing dwelling. Will be on existing piles and installation of drywells to control roof runoff with a work limit in place until AA is closed out. Additionally, we have Conservation Commission administrative approval dated 12/14/23 from Drew McManus to John Seminole. And it says, "Dear Mr. Seminole, this letter is written for the purposes of administratively approving the following activities on your property at 16 Taffrail Way in Mashpee. As shown and described on the surveyed plan created by Cape and Islands Engineering, planned dated 12/12/23, draft plan, two proposed additions on existing piles at existing single-family home, amendments to existing deck within current footprint, removal of deck portions. Please note the following conditions of this administrative approval: submission of a PDF of a stamped and dated final plan for the proposed activities, prior notice of commencement of all proposed work to the Conservation Department at least seven days prior to actual date of work, a notice of completion of all authorized work to the Conservation Department for the purposes of a follow-up inspection by Conservation staff. Sincerely, Drew McManus."
Is that the extent of letters, Mary Ann? Okay, so that being said, board questions at this point?
I'm good.
I think I'm set.
Okay. Butters, anyone in the audience having to say in reference to the application? David?
This... the building height is going to increase a little bit.
The building height will increase slightly, yes. Where that's where I go to a full second floor.
But it appears what... I can't really read it, like 27... 27 and 1/2 feet off the current grade.
I believe so.
It seems like, and you're allowed up to 35.
Yes.
So you... it's... Yeah, okay, it doesn't... it's really not a small addition, but it is... Is this in a flood zone as well?
Correct, in flood zone.
Is it going to be a substantial improvement?
Well, we gave you... we attached an appraisal that he had done, and I attached it to the building permit. So we're within whatever the 50%.
Where we need to be, right?
Yeah, I put it on the... attached. Online permit.
Yeah, it's probably pretty gross.
Right, it's probably something we have to keep an eye on.
Oh, absolutely.
Other than that, I'm good.
Okay. So one question. So from a standpoint of new non-conformities, are you creating any new non-conformities?
No.
And you are reducing some new...
Correct.
Existing non... pre-existing non-conformities. One of those is lot coverage, you're reducing that.
Right, some of the deck that exists is currently going away.
In front setback is about a foot.
Great, so I believe I did audience. Any other board questions?
I have none.
All right, seeing none, let's close the public hearing, please. Can I have a motion?
Motion, we close the public hearing.
All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in reference to the application, please?
Motion relative to 16 Taffrail Way, owner John T. Seminole, trustee, request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 516 square-foot addition replacement with a new stairway to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 106, parcel 4-0, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, motion. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A, section 6. Number two, proposed site plan, prepared for John T. Seminole, 16 Taffrail Way, Mashpee, Mass., sheet number 1 of 1, date December 12, 2023, revised 7/11/24, remove Papaneset Overlay note, revised regular front setback, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, prepared by Cape and Island Engineering, stamped and signed by Matthew Costa, number 52282. Number three, proposed building plan, Seminole Residence, 16 Taffrail Way, Mashpee, Mass., date 6/18/2024. A-1 and A-2 proposed additions. A-3 and A-4 existing conditions plan, prepared by Uroche Associates, Inc., stamped and signed by John A. Charon, registered architect, number 952384. Number four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments, and the Conservation administrative approval dated 12/12/23. and the Conservation Administrative Approval dated twelve fourteen twenty-three. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Maybe, maybe. Wait, you want to mark that out?
It's, I'll go over and help you.
Hey, you need the password.
I will be stepping down from this application. I actually put an offer into purchase of property some time ago, and I don't think it would be right for me to step, to sit.
That's a good move. Here you go.
See any motion, cheat or anything?
I don't think the cameras are on.
Is that it?
No.
There you go.
There you go.
So I think I'm.
Did you read all this stuff?
So I might have.
Did you read all this stuff?
Yep.
Majesty, it's up to you.
No, I was keeping track.
All right.
Stuff, I did not, no.
Left the record show, I am stepping out.
Did you?
All right.
As soon as I want to see what she's doing.
She's trying to turn, but I think he has to do without.
Yeah. I'm being told I have to come back, Mary Ann, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, no.
I apologize.
Wait a minute.
No, your fault.
I still apologize.
You gotta move it every now and then, otherwise it falls off.
Oh, look.
Here we go.
Oh, yeah.
And up there, too.
Oh, this is. No, I get to watch this way.
That's a good question to have.
It's similar, Johnny.
More paper coming back.
More, okay.
Yep.
Oh, wait a minute. Even more.
Sorry.
All right.
It's up by John's pond.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, Charlie, would you like to read in the next new hearing?
Sure. The next and last new hearing is four twenty Nathan Ellis Highway. Petitioner Next Grid Persimmon LLC requests an appeal of the Building Commissioner's decision under Mass General Laws Chapter forty A, Sections eight and fifteen. Petitioner disputes the Building Commissioner's determination that medium and large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems in the C two zoning district requires a special permit from the Planning Board, subject to Section one seventy-four dash forty-five point seven of the zoning bylaws, and not allowed in an R five zoning district, map seventy-two, parcel one eighteen, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, O B R M LLC, trustee of the Brickyard Road Realty Trust.
Sharon, who's sitting on this?
Um, Mike, in the, in the regular members.
So three plus Mike.
There's gonna be another one, too.
Need another one.
So we need five.
Okay, um, Bob. The boss told me just Mike.
The boss ain't here.
I was gonna ask the same question.
You're the new boss.
I'm the boss.
Sharon, before we move forward, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Based on my understanding of the Building Commissioner's ruling and comments from the Chair of the Planning Board, I don't want to waste these gentlemen's time making this big presentation because I suspect we're going to turn this back to the Planning Board.
Yeah.
And not overturn the Building Commissioner's ruling.
Yeah, why is it coming here instead of the Planning Board anyway?
Yeah, what, did you even speak to him before you wrote this appeal?
I can start, if you'd like, best chair. My name is Daniel Johnston, I'm attorney at Nutter, McClanahan &amp; Fish, appearing today on behalf of petitioner. I'm joined by the Senior Director of Land Development, Daniel Cerber, who is with Next Grid. Daniel was gonna give a brief overview of the project, but we can answer your first questions. This is an appeal only of the Building Inspector's decision that medium and large-scale solar energy projects are not allowed in R five zoning districts. So the property has two zoning districts.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying.
I mean, I.
Cause I have.
To, to elaborate on that, if you only, you're picking one part of this, you get, you look at, are you aware of one seventy-four eleven of the zoning bylaws? It's lots located in multi-zone, zoning districts. But it, this important, basically states, and I can give it to you right here, it basically states that, um.
You need to go to the Planning Board first.
It means, it, it states that it has enough land where both criteria has to be met, an R five and an R, R two. So the, the way, what we have here was an application that I wrote, I denied basically that I needed more information, and basically that it has to be set, it has to be divided into two proposals. You can't do, wrap it up in one proposal because there's two zoning, there's two zoning issues at this, and they have two different avenues to, to follow. So you need to break this up into two different, two separate proposals, not one proposal.
Understood. May I, sir, if you don't mind? So solar is not allowed, it's allowed with a special permit in the C two zone district, but parking lots with solar as an accessory use to that parking lot are allowed as of right in the C two zone district. So this was submitted as a parking lot with a solar accessory use over the top of it, and then there was a ground-mounted solar facility in the former sandpit area of the, of the parking lot. So we're not actually applying at all for ground-mounted, large-scale ground-mounted solar in the C two zone district.
They're both ground-mounted, solar.
So in your bylaw and voted?
But like what I'm saying is, you have to take one of them's at a residential, it's ground-mounted, am I correct? It's allowed, the ground-mounted is allowed on a small scale in a residential. It's not allowed on a large scale, which is what's being proposed. So that part should be separate from the, from the C two. The C two is allowed large scale through the, through the. Planning Board.
Planning Board, you have to go to the Planning Board first.
Yeah, through the Planning Board, which is, is the special permit granting authority. So you have to send a proposal to them for the C two, which is, actually is a really good proposal. I think it's expanding parking for the funeral home, that's what I understand. I think it's a much good use for this, for this piece of property. Again, what I would like to see is a, is a, a small scale in the residential, which I can, I can give you a permit, you know, that week by right. To, to do a large scale would have to, it would probably, it would be denied. So it's gotta be just two proposals? It's gotta be two separate proposals because they're two different zoning districts with two different paths for approval. Yeah, rather than put them all into one. They can be approved, both of them can be approved, if, if the. Separated correctly.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
One has to go through the Planning Board, one has to go through the Building Department.
And one is by right and the other is special permit through planning.
Well, they could both be by right if you, if you, if you did a small-scale solar in the residential.
The definition of small-scale ground-mounted solar systems and roof-mounted solar engine shall be considered accessory and allowed as of right in the districts and used in the building permit. But I assume it's like.
I don't know, what do you?
I'm reading B one. So I'm thinking just like a.
So it's gotta be an accessory use, can't be the primary use.
So, if I may interrupt, so it says, the regulations of this chapter, which shall be applicable to each portion of a lot, shall be those applicable to the zoning district in which it lies. So this property is bisected, as you mentioned, by two zoning districts. On the northern portion is C two, on the southern portion is R five.
Right.
The portion of the project that we were here to appeal is the determination that the ground-mounted project on the southern portion, which is in the R five district, is not allowed at all. It's forbidden.
Yeah, but why did you put them into one proposal?
You mean to present to the Building Inspector?
Right.
Um, we were, I think.
You need to break them up into two proposals.
They have a single interconnection with the utility, and we need the building permit to be a single building permit.
Do you want to get this through? I mean, this is easy, but two proposals.
So if we broke it up into two proposals, it would be a car-mounted solar project on the northern C two portion.
It's, it's, that's a principal use. The, that's allowed as a principal use through special permit from the Planning Board.
Yeah, but the bottom portion, which is.
Would be accessory to that.
Would be accessory to.
Which could be allowed as a small scale. I could allow it as a small scale. Otherwise, I'm gonna have, you're gonna have to make an appeal.
Yes, and small scale would be seventeen fifty square feet.
Whatever the definitions.
So if the, if Net, Next Grid wanted to continue with its current proposal, it'd still be denied.
If he wants to do a large scale on, on the residential.
Correct. So that's what we're appealing today, and if you're saying that.
Yeah, but it, we're not because we're appealing the whole project, the whole project is. Cause you put it into one. You have to separate. Can't break it up now.
All right. We, we.
I think maybe we could withdraw, we could withdraw. Withdraw it.
Yes.
Withdraw.
I think we would like to withdraw without prejudice, and we'll come back to the Building Inspector with separate projects.
That's good, and I'm, I'm open for conversation, the phone call can help this.
But the, um, the ones in the C two have to go through Planning Board first.
They can go simultaneous.
Okay.
Well, yes. So the portion of the project in the C two district, the northern portion of the property, if it's a large scale or medium scale, it'd have to go through the Planning Board for a special permit.
Correct.
But if we decide to keep the project in the south as a medium and large-scale solar, the Building Inspector would deny that, and we'd come back for an appeal of that portion.
Well, he just told you if you do it right. This board is the right place. You're all set. Because I'm, I presume that you're using the Dover Amendment.
Correct.
I, I don't think the board, this board has the authority to interpret the Dover Amendment. It's not in the bylaws at all.
The zoning board does hear appeals of the Building Inspector's decision, but we'll, we'll.
Again, we, we can, we can, we can talk about that, and we can move this along quite easily, I think.
Thank you so much.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
It's gonna be a motion to withdraw?
The applicant has requested.
The applicant has requested that the motion presently before the Board of Zoning Appeals be withdrawn.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice to refiling.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You can bring the boss back in.
Medium and large scale is still denied, yeah.
After a while, we moved on. It took a long time to move along.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Where's Ron?
We need to sign all those papers.
Hanging out in the bathroom.
What's that west end, restaurant?
Yeah, you're right. Right at the short, right, right after the.
Good move, just saves about an hour.
Thanks.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, they wanted to do the whole presentation.
Well, I mean, if it makes sense, you explained it properly, right? Set the tone, boy.
Set the tone.
That's good.
Kill it.
Why go through all that?
Exactly, I mean.
You're not gonna go against that.
We knew where we were gonna go with it.
They built a huge solar complex over in San.
Pretty shish.
Did they?
They just don't, didn't follow directions.
Right.
Now, where is this, that make melifai?
She said it was near John's pond.
It's near the, yeah, it's, I can show you this. It's on, across from, from the funeral home all the way down to O'Neal's behind it.
Wow.
Yeah.
So can we move forward, or we?
We're, we're, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of
August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think you're supposed to say that.
Excuse me.
As long as it got done.
All right, um, next new business, to interview and discuss and recommend for the zoning board appointment of various E. Levine?
Very close.
Okay. If you're not up, for some reason now I'm cheering.
I don't care.
So what did you think of fireworks?
Fireworks.
Do we have interview forms, Mary Ann? So, thank you everybody. Oh, are they in our notebooks?
Yep.
In our notebooks, we have interview forms.
Oh, my God.
Where is that?
What? Interview forms?
Yeah, you got one?
He has a resume.
What he eats. Well, summer's almost over.
Yeah.
Falls are beautiful on here.
Yeah.
Where'd you get that?
It was in the packet that.
Yeah, it's in the back of his.
Yes. There's a CV and evaluation.
All right, Ron can't sign it.
We don't have to give you these forms tonight, right?
Yes, we do.
These, interview forms?
Yep.
If we don't follow exact procedure, we're in trouble.
And I know that from the last time I went before the Select Board.
Yes.
Do we all fill it out, too?
But we pulled it off, Mike.
Yeah, we did.
Mike's brand new to the board. Actually, he's, he's quite old, but he's brand new to us.
Your hockey career was wrong on your resume.
Really, was it?
Yes, he said you started playing in eighty-three.
Wow, that is wrong.
But I let it go.
So, um, I presume we're gonna take the time now to fill this app, this preliminary evaluation form out?
Did he appear available for the scheduled meeting? Yes. Are we gonna go over, you gonna go over his responsibilities now?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to. So are you able to attend, it's like two times a month, Wednesday night, every other Wednesday night, what, first and, second and last? What, first and, is, uh, second and last?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth Wednesday of every month.
And you're available?
Except for November and December.
Most of the time, you know?
Yes, barring illness, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, there's, it's, you know what? You get a black star if you don't make a meeting, but it's okay.
From 6:00 PM to midnight.
Yes, absolutely.
Drainage and elevation.
Where'd you get that? It's the day twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Yeah, it's after his resume.
My mother's birthday.
No, you got that.
Really?
Where?
Should be a hundred and two today.
You gotta put his name and all that.
Where was the question that you just asked of him?
Right in there.
He just, she just asked.
Oh, you're seeing, oh, I see how you did it. Ah!
You're gonna have to sign it because I need them all.
I know. How well I know. So if I may ask you a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So in your resume, you state that you have some zoning background. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, um, in the sense that, um, I've been with TD Bank about 20 years as a commercial lender. Within that period of time, most of my activities, you know, financing real estate projects within which obviously various developers and builders have come up against, you know, challenges and, and, you know, limitations imposed by the various towns and municipalities respective, um, you know, zoning laws. So to the extent that it pertains specifically to financing such projects, yes. I am not an attorney, I, I'm a finance person, I have an MBA, so I, I'm dealing with a, with a, you know, financial aspect of, uh, the projects I was involved with. But yes, I'm, I'm familiar, I would not say I'm an expert, but I'm familiar with the terminology, with the, generally speaking, with the spirit and intent of the laws, you know, chapters 48 and 40B specifically. I started, um, you know, I lived in Mashpee about 21 years, so I am relatively familiar with the extent of, um, and again, spirit of our local zoning laws. Um, I've, you know, I'm at my second house in Mashpee, owned first, second, uh, you know, sold and bought my second. Um, I've actually been, uh, before, long story short, before the ZBA for my own property had to consolidate three lots into one, ended up with almost three acres of land with one single family, and, you know, I, I've been through the...
Did we approve?
Yeah, he's your neighbor.
This is, this is an interview for, for my, uh, joining of the board, let's not start on, no, no, no.
Ron knows a lot about pay-amps.
I do.
Yeah, so, so, yes, so I, I...
I wanna know about pay-amps.
Yes, so I, I ended up buying, uh, the last three lots, which had to be consolidated into one buildable lot. I, I actually, in the end, I, I enjoyed and relish, uh, what came out of it. I certainly enjoy the privacy that, that I have as a result of the consolidation of the three lots. So anyways, I am familiar with our local processes to an extent, I'm not an expert.
I've been to, I've been to your house.
Yes, and, and I finished my, my basement, uh, you know, in November, so thank you for that.
Are you the last, last lot on the paved pay-amps?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the paved pay-amps, I, I like how, how Ron, how you specified that.
So I can walk down the dirt road to get to your house?
Oh, you, you live in the...
Dirt pay-amps.
I live on Shorewood Drive.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah.
So you must know who Ron is.
Yes.
He's right behind you, right?
Yes, yep.
Or right in front of you.
Yep, yep.
Tell me about Boljai University in Romania.
I know, yeah, so, um, my, my bachelor's is in journalism, I, I graduated in 2000, 2002, um, came to the US with my wife 2003, uh, both did our MBAs at UMass Dartmouth. Um, it is, I'd say, one of the, you know, top five schools in the country. Uh, granted, it's a country of 22 million, so, you know, probably not that difficult to make top five, but nonetheless, um, it, it was the basis for, you know, liberal arts education-type university, uh, a good foundation for my financial, um, education here in the US.
How did you come to this part of the world?
In the very early 2000s and late 1990s, uh, my wife and I were in college together, came to the Cape as summer workers, the working, traveled, J1 kids with no helmets on a bike type thing at the edge of the road. So that was us back 25-plus years ago. Yes, yeah, and, um, yeah, truly, um, I, I tell people with a lot of pride and, and passion about what I feel my wife and, and my experience in the US the last 22 years, uh, since we're permanent residents in Mashpee and US citizens has been the, you know... The American dream, the, the way it used to be, I'm not gonna get political, I promise you this, just, just the promise of the American dream, and, and I think it's in intended form, um, for a long time. So I, we got to, um, to enjoy that, and, and we cherish it a lot.
So your position at TD is, what, senior vice president?
I, I'm vice president, uh, senior relation manager. So I, I manage a portfolio of clients, um, mostly from a lending perspective. I have a mix of, um, investment real estate, uh, developers, as well as operating companies, but it's heavily concentrated in, in real estate, investment real estate. And geographically speaking, I, I have projects and, and, you know, financing deals I've done, mostly in the Boston area, saw on the South Shore, out, out of state, quite a bit in the Carolinas, and across the asset classes, retail office, multi-family, quite a few.
Retail office?
Retail and office, retail and office, yes, retail com office, yes, um...
How's that office thing doing right now?
Does not go there. It's a bad word nowadays, it's toxic. It's like saying COVID, no, don't go there.
That's called workout.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, glad, not in that world.
A, a lot of repositioning and, and conversion, which...
Repositioning, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's good, I mean, if you're in, so are you in the middle of that repositioning? You're involved in that repositioning?
I was lucky to strategically have built my book of business in multifamily, and I've enjoyed a stable, um, supply and demand.
Family's pretty strong right now.
Correct, correct, and I think it will be, given the demand situation in, in, on the Cape, definitely, and in Massachusetts.
Great business right now.
Yeah, it will be a, a stable sector.
And you're in the middle of that right now?
Yep.
So you're dealing with zoning stuff on that?
Yeah, a- absolutely, and, you know, the, the whole debacle about the mass transit and certain communities refusing to, you know, adopt and follow the obligations that come with the state's regulations about density and height and all that, like Milton comes to mind very quickly when I think about that.
Doing any 40B lending?
So we are a nationally chartered bank and cannot, we're not a state bank, uh, so, um, but I do... Anyways, I started Cape Cod Bank and Trust, believe it or not, which was able to do...
So you're just doing market rate stuff?
Correct, yeah.
It's amazing that that market is even that strong out there because of the zoning issues. You know, new, new production.
Right, I, I think it's so under, the market is so undersupplied that...
Oh, it's certainly undersupplied.
It's civilian.
Question is, is, you know, is underallowed is the problem because of zoning issues.
Yeah.
I mean, I, very few communities even have zoning for multifamily rental product without, without having to go a 40B route.
Yeah, and, and I think the H, uh, H-DIP, uh, program at the state level does help in certain gateway communities, like, you know, Hyannis, um, Brooklyn, Fall River, Lowell.
This is important to me because this is all about zoning, right? This is all really, really in the middle of zoning issues. That's pretty good.
Absolutely, yeah.
Impressed.
Thank you.
What were your initial thoughts of tonight?
I felt bad, I didn't have big plans, you know, the, the drones with me, you know, to kind of keep in line with, with the rest of the group's presentation. I, I, I thought, and I know, I know, uh, Nutter McLennan Fish, the attorney who used to sit here, and I was a little surprised at that level of large firm of a national presence, that they did not have the, I guess, preparedness that...
Was that the attorney that submitted tonight when I had it without?
Yes.
Nutter?
Nutter, that, that was a Nutter attorney. Uh, I did not know the gentleman, but he surprised me when he described who he was and, and the firm that he comes from, that it would have been such an easy exercise to just...
He never contacted him to ask him why it was denied.
So that, that was one of my takeaways and surprises from tonight. I'm, I'm glad the cop, um, you know, the gentleman before that, um, it sounds like he's reducing non-conformity, um, and I was glad to see that he was allowed to, to, you know, proceed with a 500 or so square foot addition there. It, it sounded to me that he's doing more good than bad by being allowed to do so. But yeah, the solar, and I, and I, you know, I, I think we can all use more renewable energy if it's done sustainably and, and the right way, but not following proper protocol when it's so easy and, yeah.
Great, anybody else have any questions?
No.
Good.
Fill out your forms?
I did.
Excellent.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Do we need to vote on this or not?
No, I don't think so.
Well, look forward to hearing.
I would presume that, well, I, as one member, I guess, I will certainly recommend you, and so...
Have to go in front of the select.
Rest of the boy will go in front of the selectmen, and...
Just hope that the chairman remembers to file proper forms in time for the meeting.
That was my fault.
That's all right, I'll take it, that's okay. I should have checked.
Thank you all, have a good night then, um...
All right, thank you.
Have a good holiday weekend.
See you later, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for waiting.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Night.
Aye, aye, aye.
Good night, everyone.